I'm sorry, my man somewhere else.
I'm seeing your way going to ask. We have a support this time. Yeah, I want the girl fast this time.
Here we go.
She said she didn't know, then now she said she did, she didn't know about it.
She said everybody.
We got a call, that's how we asked, you know, and then you get some. That's how that happened. I don't know about you.
Sorry. Yes. Harvey?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Ford? Right here.
Meeting called and ordered. Time? We have a roll call now for?
Trustee Harvey?
Present.
Trustee Ford?
Present.
Trustee Harvey?
Present.
Trustee Owen?
Present.
Purpose of the meeting tonight is to discuss the board of trustee position regarding. It's true the meeting as scheduled, purpose of the meeting, I'd like to get a motion to approve the purpose of this meeting tonight. To discuss the board, board of trustee regarding the local emergency financial system.
To call a motion.
This is my representation.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Name? Motion here.
I'd like to, uh, also make a matter of fact, last question that I know that, uh, since it's a purpose, especially with all questions. And God said, if he have a question, there's a comment I'd like to put in the meeting. Then he present like a comment on the meeting that has been discussed tonight. The purpose of this meeting tonight is to discuss the board of trustee position regarding the local emergency financial system. On what needs to be held, just last and last thing. I'm not just beating.
For the purpose to discuss it. We have, well, I just got a notice yesterday, we have state reps coming up to talk, talk to us tomorrow at three thirty. I'll be there for sure. And, uh, I, um, I just wanted to know really the board's position on, um, on the meeting that we're gonna go to Wednesday and last, because I will be there, how many board members are going up? You going up to last? Are you going to, you know, you going up there? I'll be up there, I'm going up there too, they need to make sure I make it there. Um, they are, they are gonna give the board a chance to talk. And, um, give us our views if we are in a financial emergency. And us as a board, instead of us going down there and everybody hollering out, you know, different things. We need to see where are we gonna go, because right now it seems like everything has been brought forth to the state as many in two separate. You know, there's one group saying yes and no, but now this is at the point now that we have to at least know what's on everybody mind. Here as a board, since we make the decision, you know, I wanna bring it out, because I, um, I am planning on speaking there too. You know, I'm, but, you know, but I wanna see what everybody else is thinking also, because I, you know, we gotta speak at times. With the citizens, this is what really affects our decisions, and it needs to be a collective decision, not just one source coming in.
I guess my question is that, and then I have to agree with you on that too, is that, uh, by, uh, um, receiving this information and our strategy plan, I mean, I wish that, uh, the attorneys were here, I don't know, like I say, I just heard that they were notified to actually be here, I don't know why they're not getting along with, uh, you know, so to give us a, uh, enlighten on, on what's going on, because that would be all my concern, so again, just going up there and we all on different page, I'm quite sure the state already got a map what they want.
Exactly. I mean, you know, if, have you read this here, the response? On the notice that we, um.
I just read that, uh, something on there that they act for, uh, answer, and it's not clear in here what they want has been addressed. You know, that's, that's my concern there, and again, you know, they didn't have this, this information for them, so they know what they want, how they wanna do it. All they wanna know is what we intend on.
Exactly.
You know, and again, and I have to agree with you, is that why would you go ahead and say one thing, and of course say another thing? Or then first they would say, okay, and I guess our letter too really reflects our concern that, you know, what we want, and everybody is saying something different, and, and, and it's not what we're asking for in here. So therefore, there is a question mark, there's a problem, okay, and so we know what we want to do. So I don't want that to come up, I wanna go, like you said, I wanna go there on one accord. This is what our texts are, this is what we need to do, this is how we wanna, uh, fix this situation.
And another reason why this is, uh, excuse me, of course, that this is important, because this is a process we have to go through before we get to a financial manager. We might not never even have to go through a financial manager if they present us with a consent agreement, anything way before then. But if we go up there not on the same accord, you know, we don't send somebody in that's gonna run it for us. And, and I don't believe that, we really need that at this point.
Well, and, 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 and you know what, I'm not trying to keep y'all, but I get.
No, I mean, no, this is the dialogue that we got, because they need to hear everything out, because they're gonna have to question.
When, when I look at the city Detroit situation, and I look at, uh, the mayor, which he thought that, uh, he would have power, you know, that, uh, what the state mission about the city Detroit, and he is powerful. And a lot of decisions is really based on, okay, if I need to do this, I need to do that, and I hear talk of that. If, uh, uh, emergency manager, somebody that, uh, he would divide the community up, you know, from the west side of, uh, Wyoming would be Anixal Park. And the east side of, uh, Wyoming would be, uh, Anixal Park, I mean, just, just talk, but when you really sit back and look at, you know, it's possibility, because I know when I first come to office back in ninety-two or ninety-three, is that we were under this agreement at any time. And this thing had to be scrutinized, so that means that we, as a board, and we had to make sure that we comply with everything. Make sure that everything, uh, uh, go according to that. And to look at this right here, and the numbers here, you know, I'm saying, well, you know, it may not be acceptable, but any good thing, where you have a shortfall when it comes to money and stuff, you know, all they wanna, okay, then, this is what's going on, this is what's going, okay. This is where y'all at, y'all need to do A, B, C, D, or this is more big up, you know, but, and again, you know, it's all about going up there on a court, on a court. Because the court is divided.
And that's exactly what was good, uh, uh, that's exactly what happened with Detroit. They voted down the consent agreement every offer that the state put on the table. They voted it down, and they wasn't, you know, cohesive group, and that's how they ended up with it. You know, that was the final step, the, the M came in, the to go. I don't believe that we're in that much financial distress where we would need a EM, in the long run. But we have to come up with, that's after this stuff. But then we have to, do y'all think that we are in financial stress where we need a loan from the state for one? The, uh, that's what this meeting is about, they are gonna ask us, do we believe we need that, if not, we're gonna have to explain. And the meeting is Wednesday. So if we don't do something between now and Tuesday to come together as a full board with our, Mr. Cunningham, here too to really find out what's going on, or we're gonna have to take it upon ourselves, we need to come up with some type of direction, I'm, you know, I just wanna know where the board stands. So, you know, for one, do we think that we need assistance, that's the number one amongst us. And then, oh, how much assistance do we need? No, because I believe, like, uh, Mr. Cunningham gave us a breakdown of the deficit reduction plan, which was rejected again, but anyway, he's, he, he even said it there. The only way that we can get through everything is if we get a consent agreement to get the loan from the state. He said that in one of his reports already. And so, that's why I really wish he was here, and it mattered supervisor, was here to get there and put on his log zone. And because as we noticed in some situations, when we thinking one thing, when it's time to go up there, and I'm quite sure she is gonna speak, and he's gonna be there also, is that, you know, what I didn't understand. But regardless of that, we the board, we won her, we won Janet, we won Kim, that's what our job is as the board. So what we need to do is come up, all of us are here now, so we need to come up with what we're gonna do as a board. And that's what, no, I mean, I wanna know, and we can give them directive, e- even if our supervisor is on vacation for the rest of this week. I will call Cunningham tomorrow and tell him he has to come up, this is what directive we wanna come in, and what's going on, however he has to go. It was, we need to come up with what we're gonna do, and then we have to stay reps tomorrow. I don't know what they're, you know, I know that they represent us, but I will be here, and we need to tell them how we want them to speak for us. Because we're the board, so we have to make these decisions.
I have to think a couple. If we have, and we do still need to the board want, to show them how we gonna save money, switching numbers, doing revenues and expenses, not working. If you're not looking at the whole big picture and explaining, we got people that. If you don't have the other part of ten mile, and you only have twenty-six hundred people, and if you don't do a research, because what I've been having, Lacy do is give me copies of how many people sign in, and we really could have cut with the hours that we were here. But nobody wants to hear that, because nobody wants to cut. And you in a position now that the state, you can't just say that we, everybody gonna work the hours. We could have had that somebody work this, this hour here, and if you got overtime, we stopped the overtime by saying, if you go home, and don't come, come a little later today, and you still get your hour. But nobody wants to cut, cut the time that's people coming here, and when the state, if the state come in here and they look at the sign issue, you got ten people that came up here all, all day long, and you got people working forty hours a week, that's crazy. So if the board doesn't wanna take a hard stand to just sit up here and let Bill Cunningham decide for us what he's gonna do. Every piece of, everything that, the deficit elimination plan has been rejected. That's not the clerk's position, that's what Bill Cunningham, uh, did, and he told you why. It was, why, for every, since he told you why, it was rejected, because the merge was put in there. He knew better to put that merge in there on assumption, and he didn't have no letter saying he was gonna get it. If, he clearly stayed on each of these things, the state finding why. And when it was time to address it, instead of the board collectively doing it, because everybody wanna hurry up and give something, well, we done gave up enough. And because we done gave up enough, guess what, that's why we in this trouble. Always wanna fix something real fast and not fixing anything, nobody don't wanna address, address the issue. What do the employees do all day? Have y'all been up here to see that? Have y'all really been up here to see, are they wasting time? Are they up here really working, or could we do some job sharing? Could we have benefit just by taking people jobs and saying, now, this is what I need you to do over here, so you can keep your job? And if they didn't wanna keep it, then it was another avenue, then they need to pass somewhere else to work. You can't keep people at forty hours, because you, and, and economy and the money, the resources that we getting here is not enough of that. Now, this is crazy, and this is all the things that we've been sitting up in here, and everybody gonna do a name game plan, but guess what, the state saying, no, y'all can't do this no more. This is what's going down, it's basically showing that we an incompetent board, that we can't even do things right.
Right.
This is what he says to the state, the state saying, we gotta come down here. You can't be everybody's friend. You have to look at the numbers and see what's best for everybody.
So, let me ask you this, I pray, I know that, uh, for fiscal year for, uh, twenty, twenty fourteen, is that when the budget has been, uh, prepared, which I know that each department has to submit their budget for the fiscal year of twenty fourteen. And it's something that, and I understand second what you said, it's something that I sit down and also thought about, and I was looking at this right here, that now that this situation has occurred, that we need to scrutinize that more. You know, it's gonna say, but I know we ain't talked about, uh, the changes in, in Florida, and, uh, the salters, you know, except all of this, see, okay, the thing that we need to do, based on what you had mentioned back then, and then, now you being, we in the way that again about, you know, we need to do A, B, C, D, and that's something, uh, again, we need to, you know, not talk about it, we need to deal about.
At this point, that we're in, the state is saying, and I'm telling you, that report should have never been sent up like that. That report, everybody should have been working on, that report shows that we are more incompetent than ever. So, I mean, at this point, it looks like we do need emergency manager. Because you said, he said, in the response to the entry report, the township did not submit any evidence or information, which caused the Department of Treasury to amend the final report. Copies of both the entry report and the preliminary, when the township responds as attached, as, uh, as, as included as attachment in the final report. We needed to set down, Cunningham does not run the board, that's what's the problem is. Y'all giving him too much say so, and he urging numbers, doing all kind of stuff, and then you get this, and when they tell you what the deficit elimination plan, this one was rejected. And they tell you the reason why, and then they go along and say, the other deficit elimination plan was, 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 uh, rejected. So at one point, as we as a collective, as a board, gonna get together and say, look, enough is enough, and this is the issue that we gotta still keep sending stuff up there. Because you see everything you sent up there, they said, y'all still messing up down here, today ain't fun.
So that's the problem within itself, as you just indicated. I like to express a question that you hold your comments to have to answer. Can you please just hold your comments there for a second? Again, my clerk, and, and you just, uh, brought up some valid points there. And trustee Harvey just indicated, okay then, still, is that we still must be on the same page, okay? And it goes back to just like you were just mentioning, uh, a little while ago, is that we need to get together as a whole before we go up there, because again, I wouldn't wanna go up there and you saying one thing, I'm saying one thing. Just you know what, saying another thing.
You can be yourself, that's all.
I'm thinking, I'm playing somebody else.
I'm just trying to make sure that we got to win, so I don't know.
Do the board think that we need financial assistance from the state, first of all, that's the first question, because that's what the meeting is about. Yes. I, I, I believe we do.
I think at this particular time, and as bad as I hate to say it, I'm praying that they, I, I'm just saying, okay, you asked me, don't say what, like you said, okay? That financial manager will not come down here and take over, okay? We do not have the resources like Detroit have, they've got art institute, they've got things, we don't have anything here but our little commercial section over there, the shopping center, and our taxes, which is nothing, so I just pray, I'm praying that, I don't wanna, uh, uh, manager down here, but if we can get a consent agreement person down here to work with us. We need to work together, that's the problem, we have not been working together, I mean, I'm getting upset with you because you think one, but that's what has happened with this board, okay? And the state already knows, and that's bad that they know that we're not together. But we do need to be unified for once, and go and try to suggest what's best for this community, because hey, who wants to leave this community, this is a story place. I don't wanna see it though, and I'll do anything I can, but we need to stop us sitting arguing among ourselves, I might have one idea, you might have one, I respect your idea, but we've got to stop saying, not respecting one another, because we can't go up there to that to before them, they already know, I knew when I was supposed to come down here. When, uh, the treasurer called and said they were coming down here, I broke my neck coming up here thinking that we was gonna be as a board, because I didn't have so many different opinions, from them, when they was coming down here, they've been collecting that all along, I knew that. So now we gotta go up to them and listen to them tell us what they wanna do with us, and to me, that's bad. And that's how I feel about this suggestion. We need some guidance, somebody to, how should I say, and that's bad to say. Overseer that, that the, that the board, the things go the way they should, instead of, no, you don't do this, why would you do that, they done this, and hey, we need to get together.
So.
And we are not.
Do you think that we need financial help?
Somebody's come down and say, particularly with the three administrators, they are not together, that's the main, we are. We are the ones to check behind them, but when you come up here, everybody's doors closed, nobody can even go to next door, you know, y'all won't even, don't even communicate. So I hope we can go up as representatives of this community and be together for once.
But that's what we trying to call the meeting, for to find out, do you, I mean.
But I'm saying, you know, um, even though, you know, right, I wanna go up there, I think, and that's why.
I mean, I know, but that's what, you know, we all going up this, uh, trusty ones, but you know, we understand this situation. But, uh, I mean, though, we just try to find out, because the question that they asked, that do we believe that the township needs financial help? It's not asking about an EM, they're asking, uh, Mr. Financial.
Because this person is not, uh, saying it's supposed to be this way, that, saying another. The treasurer should be here too, and going up there along with the treasurer, the financial manager, all those administrators should be working side by side.
We understand that.
Okay, that's to me.
But what are you gonna do tonight?
This question, uh, this, this Pat, this Pat, this Pat, this Pat, please, this Pat, wait till the end of the meeting, thank you. Uh, Mr.?
So that's mine, that's the way I.
Question, trustee Harvey. I understand you wanna get all your comments out in force, but this question was coming to you, but you ain't already asked it.
And I said yes.
Yeah. My clerk? Trustee Owen?
Personally, I think that. I can't see the situation that we're in, I can't see what everybody thinks the state is out, and I don't think the state is out, first of all. Second of all, they haven't really reached out to us from the point to ask us, what time can you board be there, so we can all have you all there, so we can have this meeting and see what's going on. That's one thing that I assume that they need, you know, and we could have asked for it as well, but it wasn't the standard. I think that, um, we'll be all right next year, but we do need some assistance. You talking about the consent agreement and stuff, I wanna know exactly what that consent agreement means, because if it wanes our right to the township, okay, you know, just like you say, Detroit didn't sign it, it must have been the reason why they didn't sign it, and then just allow them to come in. But I feel that with us making the decision as a board to give it an open kind of share, so we can save some money and pay off debt, that's gonna eliminate our debt, okay? But we do have to make long-term plans to make sure that this don't happen again, as far as cuts and different things like that. Uh, and trying to get more tax revenue coming into our community, I think that's one of the main things that's got us. We got too many bills and not enough tax money coming in, so now we gotta tackle the bill, uh, that we have, uh, and, and find a solution through taxes and revenue to, to make up for it. Uh, in the long run, I think the township is moving y'all right. We went through a bad period, and I think one of the things we need to stress, even though I'm not gonna be there, is that we inherited a lot of problems as a board, it's not an excuse for what's going on right now, but at the same time, they gotta, they gotta recognize that. Because we didn't take out the three hundred dollars, thousand dollar loan that you talking about, we didn't do all these other things, right?
But we did what we paid for in fact.
Right, right. We, what we paid for in fact, and that was a positive thing.
No, it wasn't.
Why not?
Because it wasn't, because if we wouldn't have, oh, we had that three hundred thousand dollars, now, and then number two, um, the penalty for not paying, because I asked correctly, what happened if we don't, and what happened if everything that did happen, what's happening again? I believe I was told that if we did pay, we would just have to pay attention for a month until we do pay. And like I brought up at that time, if we wouldn't have paid three hundred thousand dollars, we wouldn't even be in this situation, you know, whatsoever. And that's in, in the report that the state gave back, that's one of the main reasons that we are in this situation, because we paid back a loan that we shouldn't have kept. So that's the whole thing with that, everything else you say is, is on board a hundred percent, but the state tells you when to be here. They don't care if you got a, what you doing, nothing at all like that, they don't know us nothing. A consent agreement is, it's not that they take over, they tell us, okay, we will pretty much back, you don't know, you know, it ain't no EM or nothing, but if you do A, B, and C, like you said, and you have to do it, because they're gonna be on our backs, we will get you out this jam and y'all move on and go, if we can show we confident enough to achieve that. That's the main thing that we have to do, that's what a consent agreement is, that's why when you jump to an emergency manager from where we at, you're leaving out a giant step. Emergency manager is the last one, that's when they look and say, okay, y'all are just stupid, we gonna send somebody down here that can't run y'all stuff right. That's when the EM comes in. Right now, we're just at the beginning, all of this meeting is doing is asking, do we, it's the long board. You know, just like we borrowed that three hundred thousand to get on track, illegally, we can do this legally through the state.
Right.
And they're gonna ask us, and I see from everybody, but we haven't got Joe Bo yet, that everybody so far is on agreement that we do need financial help. That's beautiful, that's the first time the board has been together on everything while we here, and it's five of us here. All in one accord, which is love. Now, how do we bring that to the state reps tomorrow to let them know that's what we wanna take up there, because they're the ones that's gonna represent us? I believe that's how we go, uh, you know, they are, they are gonna listen to us, but they are fighting on our behalf too, how we bring it to them? I believe that's how we go. Uh, you know, they are, they are gonna listen to us, but they are fighting on our behalf too. How we bring it to them to bring it to the state wins.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that, that money we paid back, the three hundred thousand was intended on us applying for the grant, for us getting those attorneys to look at it. And put it in, and the state said that unless we paid that, you know, they wouldn't even look at it. Okay? So they put that condition in there. That's why we did it.
Like you said though too, we understand everybody your friend.
That's what I'm telling you now, but I'm saying, I'm saying you, I'm not saying we don't need money. I'm not saying we don't need money here, but I want you to know, see the big picture, see everything. Don't just say we paid a bill without even.
No, because I'm the one that brought up the question, what if we don't get it in? What if we don't get the ten? What if we don't do this and we still pay this money up? And I was spun around and now we exactly in that situation. I looked at the big picture. The people that voted for it stayed, okay, if we do this, we're gonna get this, we're gonna get that. But that's neither, they know they're ninety, but that's a goal in the day.
Okay.
We have to deal with what we have to deal with now. And that's the is that we need financial help and where we gonna move from as a board. Because one problem I see only is that the board is making no decisions at all. We have a supervisor, a financial analyst that's making all of our decisions. And giving us, seeing the company, and saying, how much input have any, how much input have you had on any before this time?
I disagree with that, okay?
Okay, I disagree. How much, how much input have you put in on any before as a trustee?
Look, to come up here and make a uh, to write a letter, don't take seven members of the board to write a letter, okay township? We have all have different positions. Now, you think every time any transaction goes forward, uh, supervisor, they have a lot of authority that we don't have, okay? Each, each, I'm sorry, and I hate to say it, but we all have different duties, okay, according to the NTA manual, okay? Now, uh, the supervisor wrote that letter on her own as a supervisor, okay? There have been a lot of things, the supervisors, the previous supervisor did things on his own, you don't wanna hear, as a board. Not okay, I'm sorry, uh, there are certain requirements that they have, okay? But to say every time it's a transaction that they're tired of what they have to come up and do, but I, I, you know, I'm sorry, that's the way it's ruled.
I mean, uh, what's your opinion, first of all?
That's my opinion.
My, my thing is that, uh, I'm, I'm agree that we do need financial help. Again, as we just spoke of with our reps coming in tomorrow. I would like to, you know, like we're saying that also. And as we said as a whole, what we also need to do because I, we know, we know the amount of money that we asking for. But then now what we need to do that is that we need to by what's here, just what's here, is that we direct, Mr. Cunningham. We need to have a, a meeting, try to go on their hands. See exactly what's going on based on what this other meeting is gonna come out tomorrow, six state rep.
Right, and that's just at three thirty and I don't know what his squad just gotta eat up from the talk about it, saying that they will be up here to talk.
We, we need, we need to find out everything and we need to hold forward.
Never meet the money.
Shouldn't the treasurer be involved in, in that?
Everybody should be.
It's with the, shouldn't the treasurer, not just the, the board, the treasurer and the roles, you know what's in the finance of this, of this uh, community. The treasurer and the financial analysis, both of them should be working together. Well, no, I'm saying still, the treasurer and the financial analysis should all.
Mister uh, Cunningham, you're Monday then. Cause I'm going down too. I'll be in, I'll be there. I mean, nobody nerves. There's nobody, I mean, because it's today, so. So, uh, that's what we're doing. We're getting with the meeting Monday to talk to financial analysts about what we're gonna go up there. There, is that all it's getting with the board? Then we are gonna, um, trusty board brought up that we need to have a meeting with our, the old board to see about the treasurer, financial analyst, attorney, also Monday to discuss in detail, or at least have concrete numbers or roundabout figures, not just put up concrete cards.
Right, right.
Uh, numbers. So when we do go up there, if they ask, well township, how much do y'all need? And we end up there looking like. Hundred fifty, you know, something like that. We really have some knowledge of what we have, not based on contingency, not based on nothing, based on what we really need to bring us about.
But they gonna go over all the figures that they have presented us and the things that we haven't done and what is in our financial. They gonna go, they gonna shoot us, bad at us. Number one.
I know, that's why we gotta have all the concrete numbers, no contingency.
See, so the treasurer, you're not in the treasurer's office, you don't mind, to know what's in specifically are with that financial manager. They are very important to work to figure out. But I'm saying that they should be the representative alone. I mean, if any other trustee had a question to ask, uh, the state financial person. But those should be readily ready to answer our financial. But I, I, I'm saying, but they are the most knowledgeable ones.
I agree, I agree. Now, we should be updated as funds come in. Say, fancy, we get some money, revenue sharing, everything.
Many of you had a talk with the financial analysts months ago and told him that he had to report to us every month before he can get back. Somewhere down the line, that was coming up. That was one of my big issues. Somehow down the line, that was just gone. After all this, we can bring him back because I agree with you, Koah. And it should be every, it should be every two weeks in the situation we had, not to be too complicated on the financial. And accurate numbers, not get numbers from September, August, and all that. We can go up to him and numbers and no excuse for us to have or not. Because everything was done for him to get the information to bring us up to date. And if it's not up to date, we need to find out why. If he's not doing his job, we have people on his board that can do his job because as in other townships, all townships don't use him if we have a credible person on our board that can do his job. And that's some, something that we really have to stick to because we're the ones that, and like you said in the email he just sent, he have other clients. He's only up there once a week and we have to dance to his tune, which I don't believe is right off. And so, we have to definitely stay on top of it, but that's the afterthought now, so.
We're gonna have to put pressure on them and then also the treasurer, she has all the information she can get after what, first hand. You should have to weigh over the Cunningham for those reports.
She does, she does give up. She give up. She, every time that we have a meeting, she have bank balance. She give them to you every quarter.
For the audit, if you don't have a grant. No, I know. You keep what you just said. First of all, Mr. Renna. Mr. Renna. When the time come, you can make your comments. Right now, we got control. Wait till.
No, wait a minute. I don't care about all that. Wait until, until, then I recognize you and to then, wait till your turn, sir, okay? Wait till your turn. No, you just wait till your turn.
It's my turn.
I'm a turn. No, you don't get no turn. I tell you.
That's alright, that's alright. Uh, are you finished, uh, Mr. Renna? Mr. Renna, do you have any other comments, Mr. Renna? Uh, Madam clerk, do you have any other comments?
Trustee on, do you have any other comments?
I just wanted to see. I would like to see this all on my page. And uh, one of the things is just like I say, if we could give a, a report on the bank balances that's like accurate. So say, please, if we get some money from the source, we don't know that money came in at the treasury, no. And she knows which account. If she puts it in general.
She gives you bank balances.
I'm just saying.
No, she gives you bank balance. I see the bank balance, y'all get them and y'all, and y'all.
Okay, but you don't tell us where it's coming from and where you put it. You don't tell us.
Each of the line items, you know what the real problem is? When it comes to them bank balance, maybe we should sit down and say what this is and what this is and just go over it. And just have a work session where we can see, so you can see what this is, because she has it labeled checking, um, savings. And then, and then she put in one little part and said that this is outstanding.
I'm not trying to cut you off. What I'm saying is, she needs to tell us exactly who the money is from, how much you owe, and what account it went into. That's what I need.
For every person that.
I'm talking about with the money coming into the township.
Then he need to come, he need to come up here.
That's why it's taxes and everything, whatever says.
Like we get revenue sharing, you know, different things like that. That's important. I mean, that's like seventy thousand dollars. You know, we need to know. I mean, we need to know.
I mean, no, but that's a, I mean, no, that's, I mean, I mean, no, but that's a.
Well, I, I will request it. I will request it.
Okay, I don't, I don't, I don't have no comment.
You know what I'm saying? If, if you know something, uh, no disrespect to nobody, the bank balances, if we need a work session to learn how to read what the bank balance say, that's.
No, but I'm saying the treasurer should make that report to the board is what I'm saying. She gives us, she gives us, she gives us a bank balance. But there are certain funds come in, we don't know when they come in, until we have our meetings twice a month, then she goes.
She gave us.
She should, you know, explain it to us.
So we need a more in-depth report. And that's what I'm saying, that super want a workshop, so you got a better vision.
I would love to have some workshops that we can have, sit down as the board and get together and work out these things that she can tell us. That's what we should and, and not just.
See, just like, uh, just like we approve payroll or how we get the payroll up. We approve it before actually you write the checks, the checks come out of the account. We, we can't compare the check numbers with your bills, you know what I'm saying?
What they do is they fill out timesheets. What maybe y'all need to do is just come up here to see because when each department head fill out the timesheet, I used to correct it. I stopped correcting and sending it back to the supervisor or whoever their supervisor is and say, look, here, this time doesn't match that. But you won't never know that unless you come up to knock on the door and say, I'm coming to see what you doing. It's paid, it's paid.
I'm really more concerned with the bills, uh, not other employees and the check numbers for them, with the bills that we're paying, like the lighting, different things like that that come out of the, a cop would need to write the payroll check. Right? Those checks got a check number, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we should be able to verify that with their account.
You can, when we give you the invoice approval list, we give you that. It states the check num, it tells you, we don't process the check, it tells you the amount it's owed. When we pull out those reports, it tells you who we owe and how much it is. What I believe I'm hearing you saying is, we basically need to take the form and just have a workshop so that you understand what we doing in our office. But y'all need to come in there and see us trustees, because that's part of y'all duty to the state.
I understand that, Jennifer. What I'm saying is that if we approving your payroll a week before you even send the checks out, right? We should be proving the subject to, uh, the bank accounts, to the balances, the money being taken out of the account. That's what we should be approving to, not just approving it upfront. You see what I'm saying?
We give you the bank balance, but I hear you saying, I, I hear what you saying. What we need to do is have a session that we go over and say that this is the bank balance, this is the process here and this is this. And then we're to, and then you see the timesheet, and then you'll see that. So y'all probably need a, we need a work session so you understand what's going on.
Yeah, we need to.
And then you can say the hours on there.
So I'm looking at the treasurer needs to, uh.
Have a educational workshop.
Right, is that the clerk and the treasurer needs to have an educational workshop, you know, like not even.
It's not working. I don't wanna.
Somebody know the workshop, like you did, we gonna need to fully understand.
I want a fully. And the money we supposed to be watching in my face. We supposed to enjoy just as much as the clerk and just as much as the treasurer, right? When it comes to the funds of the township.
So we gonna put that on the, yeah, we gonna set up a workshop to where that we do.
Education is the key.
Since this coming.
Alright, alright, Madam clerk. Did you have any other comments? I don't have any, Mr. Renna. Now, we gonna get to the town. We go over to the floor. Okay? No, floor, but.
I have a question. I, I got a comment, of course, not a comment.
Okay, Mr. Renna.
First of all, if I was the state sitting down here, this board is incompetent. That's first and foremost. Secondly, what you just went through, it was my understanding years ago, that's what you're, that's part of your duty.
Right.
You should've been doing that all the time. I mean, I don't know. You called a meeting, no, I mean, no solution, not one solution anyway. You just, you're supposed to be calling this meeting to try to come up with something to show the state that you're trying to, uh, uh, cut costs and all of that. That wasn't brought up not one time. In every meeting that y'all had, you never bring that up. So, anything from this point on, there's nothing you can do anyway. I mean, uh, you there since the beginning of the year. And not one person on this board has said, well, let's cut some hours, no more than the treasurer and, 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 and she met a lot, a lot of opposition about cutting hours to the office and all that. But you got, just like I asked you earlier about that grass being cut, this is the third week. And it hasn't been cut. And it's because you putting it down? Okay, I mean, those are things that you need to look into, uh, trying to get around having equipment that's bad. Trying to get around paying for equipment, repairing equipment. All of these repair fields, I, I, I would imagine an astronomer, you know, a few, it's a whole lot of stuff that can be cut. Y'all go, uh, for lunch, for an hour, you get an hour lunch. Should be a half an hour, twenty minutes. I look crazy out twenty minutes. You know, if you trying to save money. And that's what the state looks at. Not this junk y'all be talking about, man. Y'all go, all you doing is spending your week.
Let me go back, okay. All these things just, then you just.
Everybody up here.
Okay, the thing you here just mentioned is that money that we need to get together, right?
And what y'all gonna do, the same thing you did tonight?
We can't, we got to be on the same page. That part you didn't hear. That part you didn't hear.
That's the same thing you.
But we don't have the numbers here, her.
It's frustrating, man. And I mean, and, and, and y'all really starting to piss a lot of citizens off with, with the way this board is functioning. And, and, and you don't want a manager, the first thing comes up, well, they gonna split up the township, or we gonna lose the township. We are losing the township.
Right.
Whilst I'm concerned, we, we pretty much lost it. You know? This is embarrassing, man. It's embarrassing.
Uh, we have been.
That's your opinion. That's.
That's my opinion.
That's your opinion. That's what I just indicated. That's your opinion. That's your personal opinion.
Uh, Mr. Renna, uh, to, uh, to address your point about, uh,
See, that's, that's the problem right there. Nobody really wants to face.
But instead, we gonna be on the same, of course, look at them, watch us up. What we, what we sitting down there trying to get.
Y'all, what y'all, he, he will say the same thing over and over, man.
Mr. Renna, uh, what I did for you though at this meeting because.
Well, you brought some, some good thing, but then it got spun around.
Yeah, but, uh, what I'm saying is though that we have.
And you lost your, you lost your, 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 your star at the point.
We have, we have.
You not called them that, man.
Uh, uh, we have people that's working on actively now, will come together and that will be brought up Monday, of coming up with plan of action.
That's what y'all, that's what I.
I mean, we're in the process of doing that. We can't do it in one evening. That's the matter we're gonna have.
But you the star though.
You go through and go, I mean, no, you are correct. That's what we're gonna start with Monday, to get the numbers to see exactly what we have.
Can I ask you something?
We have some people, if they.
Can I ask you something? Can I ask, can I ask you just one question there? I'm dumb. I brought this up months and months ago. Has anybody, uh, went out and did any research about co- uh, uh, outsourcing different jobs? Or did any research on, on anything, man, as far as cutting money?
I have.
Has anybody? Have you?
You asked me the time study, right?
I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking you in front of all. Some people didn't even know what this time study was.
You know what? I knew what it was.
Yeah, have you done that yet?
Let me finish.
How long does it take to cut a lot?
Already started.
How long does it take to cut a lot?
Depends on the size of lot. You look in between, maybe.
How long does it take to cut a large lot?
About two.
Two hours?
Yes, a large lot, like the mine, like takes about two hours.
Mr. Renna, we are gonna have an in-depth study on everything because we are coming up with a plan action. We're gonna invite every person.
I did a time.
So, for to do it. I mean, no, and I was gonna ask if we could have the community come in for us just.
Hey, I, I think the same. I think the same. The community can't get input in on that.
I mean, no, but we need the community to come, no. That's why I called this meeting tonight. We will have a plan of action within a month. We are putting one together now and we're gonna invite everyone.
I, I, I mean, it took four hours to see y'all say the same thing over and over.
If we are gonna.
Ask anybody out here. We need a plan of action.
Uh, here comes, so, the thing that we've been asking as a board for a long time, we are gonna take it upon, when I said to start putting one together, and invite every board member to do, but we have to have one. We can't keep paying bills month to month. Excuse me, we can't keep paying bills month to month, and that's our big picture, our big goal. We don't have no, and that's been one of my pet features, I've been on the board, we have did no type of financial study, nothing at all, but this meeting tonight I called because we got this letter, we was gonna have a meeting. Nobody said anything about us coming together to find out what's gonna happen at this meeting. I'm new to the board, I know one thing, that I'm not finna go to Lansing and stand there and don't know what none of my colleagues say or think at all, I cannot do it. And so that's the purpose of this meeting tonight, because.
I said, what, what y'all wanna to say? Right now, first thing. What, what, what are you gonna say?
Money, money.
That we do need financial help. That's, the meeting is, is in front of the law board to see if we think that we need help, and do we need help.
But I, I thought, I thought.
It's just a channel, you know.
I thought the meeting was going, uh, you know, try brainstorm, put some, some ideas together.
Brainstorm is gonna start.
Outlash something, and have that to show.
That's what we're gonna have Monday, that's what he talked about, that's what we're gonna have Monday, because our, our numerous people is not here. And so, no, if that's where we coming from with that, with that plan of action, this regimen, it, it is what coming, that's my work. So, right, that's it, sir.
Okay, Mr. Rennel, come on, your turn.
Mr. Rennel, I'm gonna be, bring out something for you. What did you say that email from Mr. Cunningham, coming here?
Um, I got an email from Mr. Cunningham requesting some information from, um, and it wasn't my privilege, so, I didn't talk about it. Um, coming, directing some items from the treasurer, and I noticed in his email, he stated that he's only up here once a week, and he needs to stop there, and that's when he needs it. Pretty much, that's basically, I just tried to put it up, I was gonna read it exactly of what it said, but that's what the email stated. So, that mean that, because he needed some information to complete, what was it, September? August, numbers, and this is October now, but, uh, he was, he was in Washington, he had, he was, he is that, he stays in his, he is serious that, he has other clients that he has to deal with, and he's only up here once a week, and he needs all this.
He said, he said, and he said he's up here once a week, I got the letter too.
Well, the thing is, Mr. Rennel, you know.
Well, I didn't read it twice, my bad, it's twice a week, he's, he's up here and has.
Mr. Rennel, you're one of the greats, right, when we talk about the money.
Well, I'm not.
The thing is, is that, if till the trustee broke, uh, the same payroll was, no bill, no, I can't, I don't care how late it is.
Y'all have been doing it?
I'm sorry.
So you're on the right track, didn't do that, but at the same time, if I work for you, I don't tell you when I'm gonna work, how I'm gonna work, and that you can kiss my the hat if you don't like what I say, and give me a check. Okay? Okay? Let's be honest, way back last summer, there was Kim Bradley, well, before they even took office, there was Kim Bradley, there was, uh, white guy here from, uh, uh, what's that, fix that front, police, uh, uh, um, there's a moment, no, the, the community, the community that y'all are.
DDA?
Yeah, DDA. Mr. Cunningham was sitting up here throwing out terminology and talking about things, and people have their accounts, they're scratching their head saying, what are you talking about? What is that? Oh, it's a new terminology, so wait a minute, I'm an accountant, I never heard that before, bro, you're not up on the land of stuff. Okay, I mean, I mean, this is what he said in the meeting talking about. Okay, now, you going to Lansing next week, which you damn near, I don't care who, the only people that can tell the attorney not to come to a meeting is the court trustee. If you know your power.
I told him, man, you never completely put it all, but I don't know how many times.
You don't, no, you don't realize your power. The clerk can write a check, but if court trustees say, don't believe that, check don't go nowhere. Okay, Mr. Cunningham has told y'all he works once a week, but now I got a question for you. Mr. Cunningham has given y'all a bill, look like here, the trips to Lansing, Mr. Ong, did you okay him going there? So what do you can tell him when he asks you for this, uh, forty seven hundred dollars?
Hold on. What is this, Mr. Rennel?
I'm just asking, I'm just asking, you see what I'm saying? People do say, then they come back and they say, okay? I sat up there and heard, I sat up there and heard the supervisor say, this is my job, this is, I have the right to do this. The treasurer will sit up there, Ms. Philutus will sit up there and say what she had the right to do. The clerk will sit there and say what she has the right to do, but guess what? If the court trustees know what they doing, they'll sit there across their legs and say, ain't none of you niggas doing nothing that you be saying you do. You know, so, you got to realize what your power is, okay? But it don't do no good, if you sit up there and say, A, B, and C's gotta be done, and then they turn around and say, ain't setting my own, we can do it this way anyway. You got to have enough backbone to put a stop to it. Now, like I said, I wanna know, I, if I was the trustee, Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Philutus or somebody from his office were there that night, or she did say that everybody was over there.
Who ever called the meeting?
The state board, I didn't follow up, touch that, we, we, we'll follow up.
Who ever called me?
I have a question.
Wasn't that supposed to go out here?
Who called the meeting? Who called this meeting?
I did.
And who called the meeting, so, and, and when did they get those vacations?
Um, I called the meeting, what, two days ago? Two days, as soon as I got the letter, we were about to meet in Lansing.
And you get a response from them, said they wasn't gonna be here?
Well, I just found out that the supervisor, I, um, I had been calling to ask, because I report to the clerk, because the clerk had to post all the meetings.
But it was a call first, to ask for the bill, then, and then.
But, you know, I'm still learning the protocol.
But those things, that's what happened, I was, it was, it was the same thing that the board was told.
It was right, they got told.
She got a town?
Right.
She got a town.
I don't know, I didn't know.
She got a town.
I don't know, I do not know.
But, but she definitely should've been here.
Vacation?
But there is times that, that, that officers do not be here, we've had meetings, this is real.
But you said it, township was important, there, but it was a vacation.
You just said that the supervisor, you said that the supervisor make decisions that work and do, in other words, what she wants to do in certain ways.
No, I didn't say, no, I didn't say, no, I didn't say that she could do it.
What, what you say?
No, I didn't say that, I said, I said, the, the, the three administrators should work together, no, I didn't say she could do it.
Okay, but, but the mom and mom idea, she wrote this letter on her phone, on the send back, send back up there, her and the financial.
On her own.
On her own.
On her own.
On, so she should be here tonight to.
To answer that, she explained it, she explained it at the last meeting, she mentioned it.
But, but number one, I know, but, but I think that one of the main problems with the board, the community board, the board here, you all need to oversee, there should be a community group that should be voted in to oversee you all, and number two, as trustees, you all should have a manager, you get a manager, you.
Yes, and I.
You really know what your job is.
Yes, Kate, I care, and I studied, all done, I got somebody here.
And follow through on this, it's a tiny thing. Number two, you all need to get, get up out of the township and go to other mid meetings, and wherever they at, Lansing or whatever, you need to go. That's how you learn, otherwise you gonna say, wait, let me finish, this, that's the only way that state gonna look at you all as being viable, that you're making big changes. You talk about how much loan it take, you, nobody's mentioning up here, how you gonna pay it back?